Okay, I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole for Thursday, December 7th, 2017 at 6:00 PM. Can I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Melendi, Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Drizell.
Yes.
Mr. Garren.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
All right, before we do the pledge of allegiance, we have, can I have a moment here? Mr. Fleck, you want?
Sure, I want to just recognize a gentleman who really did a lot for District 158 as a member of the community. He recently passed away, his name is Richard Evans. For those of you that don't know, Dick Evans was one of the pioneers of Del Webb when they came in to the area. And he started a group called the Community Student Outreach Program, which Eileen Delahanty has been very involved with. And the significance of that program is kind of a big deal to me. I met Dick in 2002 and he was so excited about an opportunity to get the wisdom and the experience and the skills that came from all the people that were moving to our community, to be a part of it and to donate their time to the schools in big and small ways, and Dick was a champion of that. I was very proud to know his family, I don't know if any members of his family were able to make it here tonight. They have some other things going on, but I just wanted to recognize Dick and all the things that people like him have done in the community, because this is a whole group of people that don't have students in the district. And what a great way to enhance our district. Dick recognized that having good schools was nothing but a positive for the community, for the neighborhood, including for Del Webb, so I just wanted to mention that. We could have a brief moment of silence for Dick Evans. Thank you.
Okay, and I'd like to ask Dr. Zayas to come up.
Okay, we have a few students here and they'll introduce themselves to you today to lead us in the pledge. And they also will be part of the academic spotlight, so all these students work in our Learning Lodge and you'll learn about today about what our Learning Lodge is over at Chesapeake, but they'll start with the pledge.
Do you want to bring that down too?
Kylie.
Jack.
Cooper.
Kenley.
Bryn.
Viviana.
Kani.
Okay, if we could all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys want to come up here and sit for a little bit?
On up.
Come around.
Try to see. Come on over here if you want. And if the green light's on, you can just talk in a normal voice.
Is that going to hold?
Hey, Christmas Story!
Yeah, isn't that awesome? Here, you can sit right there if you'd like.
I got a cup. Kenley. Kenley and Kylie, no care, you guys get a whole candy.
Mom, I saw my picture.
Cause they're famous.
Cooper. Here, listen to mom. No.
Look at the computers.
How you doing? Good, yeah? Thank you for coming out tonight and helping us with the pledge. Did you know that pretty well already?
Yeah.
Yeah, you say it every day?
Yeah.
That's good. So how's school going this year?
It's really good.
Really good?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's your favorite part of the school day?
I don't know.
Is it taking the bus?
Art.
Art, okay. What else? Math? Math is good.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Lunch.
Hey, we've got a holiday coming up, right?
Christmas.
Christmas, yes, and so Christmas break is coming up really soon. Do you know how many days until break?
Eighteen.
I knew somebody would know it. You know, I, you know what, I do believe I've asked that in the past and nobody has been that quick with an answer. That's my guy, all right. Who said that, was that?
Yeah.
Over here, yeah, all right. He has, he has a good future ahead of him, so. All right, so what are you looking to do on Christmas break? You looking to open presents, are you looking to eat? Are you looking to go on a trip?
Presents.
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 Presents, yeah? Yeah, do you want, do you want things that'll help you with school? Are those the kind of presents you want?
No.
Does anybody want a computer?
Want!
Want!
Well, that would help you with school, right?
I want a phone.
You want a phone? Believe it or not, a phone can help you with school too.
I want a phone too!
Yeah? Good luck, parents. All right, so you guys, what's your favorite, who's your favorite principal at school?
Dr. Zayas.
That was almost as quick as eighteen days, so that's pretty good, that's pretty good.
You're live, you're live, you're live, I say hi.
So, all right. One more question. Who's excited about the snow?
Me!
Oh, I hear a boo, who said boo? Raise your hand. Who likes snow better than summer?
Me!
Me!
Oh wow, who likes summer better than snow?
Me!
Me too.
You get to go swimming in summer.
Yes, you can. All right, well, I want to thank you guys for coming and helping, helping us out tonight, and parents, thank you for bringing them out tonight. And I wish you guys good luck, all right, for the rest of the school year, and I hope, I hope Santa brings you everything you want. Is that good? All right, thank you. That's still my favorite part of the meeting. Okay, now it gets boring, no, sorry. Okay, no, actually it gets exciting because we're going to talk academic spotlight and we're actually going to bring up some of the kids too to let us know what's going on, but before we do that, Ms. Lombard.
So, we have asked Dr. Zayas and some of her staff at Chesapeake to come up and highlight something that is going on at Chesapeake. We have, this is, they call it the Learning Lodge, however, all of our elementaries have similar type programs. It's looking at our reading interventions in both literacy and math. And we've got Dr. Zayas, Kathy Camper, and Jill Hayek, and then our students from the pledge to kind of share a little bit about what they do in the Learning Lodge and what they kind of think about that, so.
Okay, so just a little bit about our Learning Lodge. This room used to be just an open area, it was called the Community Room over at Chesapeake, so it's that first room when you walk in where voting used to happen, and then there was also a parent top program there. When the room opens up, walking around with Dr. Burkey looking at some rooms, what should we do? They, let's do, try these pods and collaboration rooms. So we did try collaboration rooms, right, and we have different rooms in there, so you'll see a video. Really with the collaboration room, the students come for interventions for reading and math, and we also use the lodge to, for students for all different academic areas that students can use it. And we also have a program called our Cheetah Leaders, so you'll learn about that in the video also with our Cheetah Leaders, but they're ready to answer any questions about how they use the lodge as well after you see the video.
The Learning Lodge is a place to have fun, learn, and grow.
We work in small groups with the best teachers.
Hold on, restart it. Don't want you to miss any.
Welcome to the Champion Learning Lodge!
The Learning Lodge is a place to have fun, learn, and grow.
We work in small groups with the best teachers.
We have lots of posters and tools to help us learn.
We ha, we work hard and have fun.
We are learning about diagrams. The, the two letters stick together loving one sound.
These students are receiving instruction in a foundations lesson. Foundations provide students with a foundation for reading and spelling. Here some friends are tapping out the sounds they will need to spell a word. A student is also praised for referring to materials hanging in the room to help her use correct letter formation.
We are learning words to memorize them in a sentence.
We are using the le, the letter towels to make grid, and the vowels are very pink.
Mrs. Shep's was reading a wax story and teaching me how to read.
I'm in reading interventions in the Learning Lodge. I'm learning how to be a star at reading.
I'm pointing to the letters with baby echo.
I am the brilliant, I'm learning magic, I'm singing them now.
I was dropping the first sound, just charred it away, the worst of the way.
That's a bad intent.
We are in making connections learning about strategies. Interventions are really fun and I kind of don't want to leave.
T, top.
We are using a box to find the difference.
We use the hundred, the hundred chart. When adding and subtracting numbers.
I graduated from Reed Naturally, I'll tell you all about it.
Second graders are Chesapeake Cheetah Leaders, lots of Chesapeake Cheetah Leaders want to be teachers when they grow up. I want to be a classroom teacher someday.
I'm, I'm sending aside Cheetah Leaders Learning Letters.
I really like being a Chesapeake Cheetah Leader because I love helping kindergartners. I remember my first day of kindergarten and I really loved it, so, well, I'm glad to be a Chesapeake Cheetah Leader.
Uh, do you want to talk, talk a little bit about the Cheetah Leaders, what they are? Who wants to, who's a Cheetah Leader?
Kylie.
Kylie, you want to say what a Cheetah Leader is? What do you do?
Um, we teach kindergartners things and we review things with them.
What do you work, what do you work on with the kindergartners?
Um, letters.
What do you work on?
Letters, sounds with the kindergartners.
Good job.
So, um, responsible, respectful, and very involved second grade students were chosen to be part of the Cheetah Leader Program. And so they have a, some books and some letters and tools, and they go down twice a week to the kindergarten hallway and they meet with kindergarten buddies and they talk about reading and letters and things like that. You guys have any questions for us?
Cooper would like to tell you a little bit about interventions. Here, come on, Cooper.
Um, so, um, I, I graduated from Reed Naturally and, um, at the Learning Lodge, um, we work on computers and small rooms and we, um, work on letters and, um, syllables and, um, learning new words.
And what did, what did you, what are you working on specifically that you graduated from?
How many words?
Fifty words.
And now, how many do you read?
Eighty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, nobody wants to say?
I have an idea.
What is it?
I love doing math.
You like, you like doing what?
Math.
And what hap, what, you were in math interventions, what happened now?
Um, now I just do reading.
Yeah, just, just one question for the students there. Do you have a lot of fun when you go to the Learning Lodge? Yeah, is it more fun than sitting at your desk? Yeah? Any other questions? And how, how, when was this room first developed? Was it?
Yeah, last year.
Last year?
We used to, our interventions used to be in between where the grade levels are.
Right.
We have a room down the first grade range, we have a room down the second grade range, now it's all together, which is kind of nicely located.
Mm-hmm.
And all our materials are in, and the nice thing about it, Jill and I are in there with a certified staff, but our A's are in there and like, all the time, I'm popping in and giving some TVs to them, so it really works well. A great setting for learning and for giving, for, um, just being there with the kids and at their level. They really are, they really are happy to come down because they're, they're learning a lot and they're comfortable with it.
Mm-hmm, and that's great that the second graders are kind of mentoring the kindergartners. That's a, that's a great model, especially at that age.
Yeah, this is our third year, I think, of doing it.
Okay.
And it's, it's really amazing to watch the second graders work with the kindergartners and they form little relationships and sometimes they end up writing letters to each other and it's fun, do you guys like it?
Fun, man!
Well, thank you for all your help.
I, I got a quick question. So how, when they go down there, how much time do they spend at a time, is it like a class period or?
It's a half hour period.
Half hour, okay.
Some kids spend every day for half hours for reading and or math, and some kids come three days.
Okay.
You said about the Learning Lodge?
Right.
Yeah. We're in the process, just in the process of getting the collaboration rooms into the library, so then we'll have more space for more students to be able to use it because they're pretty filled up most of the whole day. So then now the library, I'll have those collaboration rooms with TVs and monitors and then for kids to do some other things in there as well. So we'll have that hopefully by the end of this year and next year for sure.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to public comments, do we have any public comments? No, sir. All right. Okay, time for revision and adoption of the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second for Mr. Troy, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion carries, Mr. Garren.
All right, sixth step one, the Huntley High School additional new courses, speech sequence and orchestra. Dr. Schlichter.
Thank you, as I mentioned at the last cow, we had brought forward the larger list of new courses and I had mentioned at that time that we had a few stragglers that would be coming forward here in December, we just needed to flesh out. The first one is, is really kind of an easy no-brainer, we've got concert orchestra, so that's going to be mirroring concert band, that's just part of our orchestra roll-up to the high school, we are very, very excited about that and so we've already kind of got the ball rolling on facilities planning and that has been a very, very positive addition, so we're looking forward to adding that at the high school. And then the second piece has to do with a revamped and really enhanced speech sequence. As we looked at our speech sequence, we really felt like it was important, and this was really generated at the high school, that we needed to turn that into a communication sequence, it's so foundational and important. When we talk to community leaders, when we talk to employers, and we know for adults, that's one of the most important skills is communication in different types of settings. And so looking at that sequence, we're really looking to continue our current focus of our current speech class in a public speaking venue, that's sort of the, the main focus of that class. But then to build a sequence that would then include advanced speech, which would have really a diversity of areas of focus. So looking at speech in different settings, it could support a business class, more applied settings. So cross-gender speech, speech related to issues of diversity, so how can we communicate across groups and for specific purposes and audiences? And that would be the area of focus for that next step in the speech sequence. That would replace our current forensics classes, which typically actually don't, don't fill and don't run. They are the next step currently in our speech sequence, and the high school really felt through that English department in the review that it was a better move to take speech and turn it into a more applied communications focus, so that our students could gain that experience in a way that was more applied and relevant. It could support our academies, numerous, numerous applications. And then of course the addition of dual credit speech, which would allow students to gain community college credit for their speech class. As you know, we've been adding dual credit classes as quickly as we can, it's dependent on certification of staff members and so we've had this one kind of teed up and ready to go for a while, just waiting for that last certification piece and we do have a staff member ready to teach it, so we're excited to propose that. We feel like this could really be the beginning of a speech sequence that could truly grow to support a lot of different areas of focus in careers, but also different college paths. As we know that that is feedback we continually get, that students and, like I said, really adults in, in the business world need to continually hone those skills. So you see in front of you the three, four classes, so three and So, you see in front of you, um, the three, four classes, so three in the speech sequence, one for orchestra. Essentially, public speaking is a, is a renaming and enhancement of our current speech class and then we have the two additions. Um, so with that, I would take any questions?
Any questions? Quiet, uh, quiet group tonight. So, with no questions, I'll recommend that we approve that at the next board meeting. And then we'll move on to six, stat two, the HHS proposal for grading period procedure. Again, Dr. Schlichter.
Thank you very much. Uh, this one is the culmination of the work of a representative committee at the high school and the proposal is to adjust the grading periods at the high school. Uh, and we've done this several times, you know, in the last few years, we keep looking at student need. Uh, not too long ago, we adjusted the first semester grading period to end before winter break because we felt that was best for students. After continuing to study this issue, we are going to make the recommendation, um, that we no longer have quarter grading periods, that we simply go to a semester system. And the reason for that, uh, you can see in the memo, I will just highlight a couple of components there. The first is that, um, when we started to study, we know that a lot of other high-achieving high schools have gone in this direction or are studying to go in this direction. And when we started studying it, we realized that one of the largest or most, um, important rationales for keeping the current system is that there's an impression that students receive a quote-unquote "fresh start" each quarter and that that's somehow helpful to them. And that argument has really become quite obsolete for a couple of reasons. Uh, one is that when we look at our standards-based, uh, instruction and moving forward in a standards-based manner, it doesn't make any sense to somehow randomly cut a grade at a quarter and start it over. Because as we look at mastery and as we look at students remediating tests, being able to take them over, what we're finding is our quarter system is actually boxing us in because we're having to stop the instruction and stop the remediation or the retake of a test simply to issue a quarter grade. It makes a lot more sense to look at learning as, as a continuum, uh, it really through towards the end of the semester. And I think the other piece, and the high school is, is really the one that did this research and they, they came forward with it, is that there, there's a lot of stress around quarter grades that is completely unnecessary. So, rather than just having those two semesters like colleges do, where we know we approach the end of the semester, we need to make sure we're studying, we have finals, the quarters were becoming almost mini semesters in that way and it was just an additional stress point and truly completely manufactured. There's no need for it from a grading perspective, there's no need for it from a learning perspective. And so, we really believe that it will serve learning purposes. It will also serve our reporting purposes and moving forward for standards-based instruction as well as students' social emotional needs if we simply just delete quarters out of our grading periods and move to a semester system. So, that's the, the summary of the rationale behind the proposal, but, um, Dr. Rowe is here and we're both certainly willing to discuss and answer any questions.
I have a question. In the supporting material, you, you list some districts that have gone in that direction. Have you talked to any districts that have addressed the same issue and decided to stay with the quarter system and if so, why?
I'm not aware of any, so from my, to my knowledge, I'm not saying there aren't any, but to my knowledge and the ones that we've looked at, any district that has chosen to study the issue has moved in this direction.
There was a, um, there was a, actually, Mr. Cupfer started a, a chat chain in the, uh, the CADCA.
Chicago Area Director of Curriculum and Assessment. It's a long acronym, but it's basically all of the curriculum and assessment directors' assistant superintendents from the large Chicago area districts.
And the, the result of that is we walked away thinking, wow, we should have done this 10 years ago when everybody else did it. Um, it, it was a, a pretty resounding, we're all in. And I, I think the, you know, the interesting thing is, is semester grades are what go on the transcript. That's what, that's what's reported. A quarter grade, like Erica said, it, it's just a moment in time where we pause and say, here's 40% of your grade, when it, it ultimately is going to calculate to be at the 80%. So, two 40s making up an 80 when we can continually progress toward that same 80%. Quarter grades aren't reported, it's just a checkpoint for parents.
And along that line, yeah, that's what I wanted to make the point, is that it's a communication point for parents. It's something traditionally we're used to sort of seeing in the middle of the semester and that communication will continue. It just won't be accompanying a, a quarter grade that's a, a stop point.
I guess that was my main, my main thought as it went through, is there, uh, is, my, my fear would be is that it limits the feedback, that official feedback cycle, the mid-course correction, if something's going wrong, how do you address that? Like, how do you get that? How do you ensure that, that if I'm off the mark and I, how do I make sure I know that?
Sure. We, we, we talk regularly about what that, about parent communication in the building in general. Anytime a student drops, you know, to an F for the course grade, the expectation is that, that, that parent is being contacted. Um, and the counselor's monitoring that even prior to, regularly doing their, their weekly quarter checks, reaching out to students who start, are starting to slip in conjunction with the teachers. Um, our parents are very attuned and connected with the Power School app and even with my third grader, I get a notification if the grade drops. So, they are super connected to it, yet the quarter will offer, up, offer us the opportunity to send an email of, hey, you know, this is a great time, check the grades on Power School. If you have concerns with it, let us know. If you'd like a printout of current, um, your current practices, you know, we're to the point where technology, where that ought, that we're on the verge of that being able for them to print those reports whenever they wish.
Good.
Any other questions, comments? Nope. And I'll recommend we move that forward to the next meeting and we'll turn it over to Mr. Drazal with Policy Committee. Okay, Policy Committee, there's 33 policies that were updated in one form or another. Um, actually, eight of them were just legal reference updates or, yeah, and, uh, six of them were non-substantive, meaning the numbers three were spelled out. So, um, not a lot of changes to, to most of these. Uh, any questions, any discussion? Ms. Melody, any questions?
All in favor of following the law?
Um, there is the one, um, there is the one, uh, relative to, uh, vacation and sick days with references to our, um, uh, association agreements that will need to, to stay in place, but outside of that, I... Okay to move this forward?
Yep.
Okay. Good. I like quick committee. With that, we'll move that on to Finance Committee.
They, they make it easy because of...
Okay, I set the bar really high, so you gotta, you gotta go for it, buddy. Go, eight, stat one, payables. Uh, we have our, uh, payables and press checks, accounts payable and disbursements before us. Is there any questions or concerns related to those items?
No issues here, sir.
Okay, Mr. Fleck, none there, okay. Uh, we shall move that forward to the board for approval. The board meeting, uh, eight, stat two, fiscal reports. Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much. In front of you, you have the October 2017 Financial Executive Summary. Uh, district continues to track within budget. I do want to point out that during the month of district, during the month of October, which I did communicate, I, I believe at the last meeting, the district did receive the fourth quarter categorical for FY17. So, within the statement and the financials, you are looking at under the state line item for revenue, um, that is where the 1.6 million in fourth quarter categorical was in fact recognized, so I did want to point that out. So, that is good news. On page two of the Financial Executive Summary, you may note, um, each and every month that we, we do this, we provide you, um, the state receivable, what is owed from the state currently. Um, so currently for FY18, the Q1 MCATs that are currently outstanding approximate a million dollars. I think the point that I want to make here is typically our categorical has approximated 1.6 million dollars each and every quarter in the past, but under the new funding formula and under the new base funding minimum, our quarterly MCATs are only a million dollars versus 1.6 million dollars. So, we are receiving $600,000, right, each and every quarter, a lot more timely because that is part of our new base funding minimum. So, that's good news from a cash flow perspective from the district. The million, just so the board is clear as to what are those new categoricals, it's primarily transportation reimbursement, private facility and room and board. So, the private facility and room and board are the special ed components of the categorical payments. So, I did just want to point that out, so if you're seeing that for the first time. Health insurance, we continue to track, uh, track within the budget for health insurance, so I have no, uh, no concerns on that line item. Within the dashboard on page three, um, specifically on the revenue side, you will see a lot of red line items. Um, I have no concerns on any of the red line items with the exception of, and we've talked about it in the past, is the impact and transition fees. Um, it does appear at this point in time that we are probably not going to hit our annual revenue goal of $650,000. That being said, I am working with the various villages, um, to determine where we think we are going to end up on that line item. So, um, stay tuned on that at a future board meeting. I will have that, that analysis pulled together just so we can kind of track against that moving forward. Um, other than that, I have no concerns on the expense side. The district, uh, uh, continues to perform favorably versus budget. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? For Mr. Altmaier? Okay, I have none. Therefore, we shall move on to eight, stat three, which is our monthly fiscal reports. Mr. Altmaier?
I think the only thing I really want to point out here, I do have a few things though, uh, is during the month, we did have the debt refunding, right? The district closed on the Series 2017 Tax Exempt Qualified Bonds. Specifically on December 7th, the district closed on 9.735 million, um, of Series 2017 General Obligation Refunding Bonds, which were the 2003, um, bonds. Uh, the bonds, uh, the Series 2017 bonds matured through January 2036, so we've extended our debt, we've cleaned up, um, what we need to do. We have a few more refundings, uh, still moving forward to do to, to, to get to where we need to be and the net interest cost on that refunding was 3.64%. So, uh, a very, very favorable interest rate, um, uh, for what we needed it to be and what we want to do. So, uh, very, very happy with that refunding, so. Uh, the preliminary levy, as you know, that, uh, the haring will be next week. Uh, we have two herrings next week. That will be the levy haring for property taxes as well as the statement of annual affairs, um, the waiver of the statement of annual affairs and publishing that in the newspaper as we have done for the last four or five years. Other than that, um, did want to note that, um, a tech surplus list will be provided to the board at the next board meeting as an action item. We're pulling that together. Uh, we are currently stockpiling a lot of items out in our bus bay, uh, for disposal, uh, waiting for the board to approve the, the, the disposal of those items, so that will be at the next board meeting. Um, today, we actually had a six-month co-op meeting with CLIC, a property and liability and workman's comp insurance provider. It's a six-month update, halfway through the year update meeting. Um, very good news came out of that meeting. Um, based on our, um, experience on the property and liability side, um, the district is going to receive a rebate of $39,000, which is really an equity rebate dating back to 2003, '04 timeframe. Um, so there's a little bit of a rebate from 2003, '04, all the way through 2012 and '13.
That's a little bit of a lag.
So, as part of the, part of the CLIC co-op and how we're performing from an experience standpoint, they are giving all of its members, um, dollars back based on that experience and based on where, uh, the co-op currently financially stands, so that's good news. Um, moving forward, we think next year's property and liability insurance, um, you know, we should expect a 2.5 to maybe a 3% increase in overall rates. Um, and on the workman's comp side, again, based on experience, um, we should expect a 0% to 3% increase in workman's comp, both of which are very favorable versus what we've seen in prior years. So, um, good news on the property and liability and workman's comp side.
Okay.
And other than that, that is all I have for fiscal update.
Okay, so concerning our debt refunding, uh, we talked about possibly doing it again after the first of the year, but we had some, you know, we had some tax proposals, some tax laws, both the House and Senate passed. I have not, I did not see in the Senate's version whether they addressed...
I have not.
I haven't seen anything from Eric.
I have not received any update on that, so I'm, I'm assuming it's, it's just they haven't addressed it yet.
Okay, so, we, we, we should kind of reach out to Eric and his merry band of people there and just kind of stay in touch with that, because there should be, you know, there should be some action here in the next couple of weeks, one way or the other. Um, so if they don't change the law on that, we're probably going to want to go ahead and try and look at round two here.
Correct, correct. So, if rates continue to stay low, which we expect them to at this point in time, um, we will be looking at doing another, um, parameters resolution and moving forward on a Series 2018, $10 million, um...
Right.
...refunding as well.
Okay. All right, just wanted to keep that on our radar.
Yeah, and that would be an advance refunding, so...
Right.
If they do pass some legislation, we can no longer do an advance refunding, we will have to wait until those bonds are eligible to be refunded, which would be, I believe, later, much later in the year.
Yep. Yeah, that is correct. Um, so any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, I had a question about the CLIC stuff.
Yeah.
You said it goes, that refund, rebate goes back to 2003? Why so far back?
Probably what our membership...
If you know.
I, I, I don't know. I think they analyze the claims year by year and the favorability of those claims year by year that goes back into the pool.
It's just part of the history, it goes back that far, it's not just for that year.
No, no, I understand, but...
And so, because they have a surplus of cash and assets to support the overall pool, I think the board said, you know, it's time to give some of those dollars back to its members. And not only did they just give the members dollars back, but they analyzed it year by year for each and every member based on the experience of that member...
Okay.
...year versus what we paid...
Sure.
...versus what we incurred versus what went back into the pool. Does that make sense?
Kind of. Um, just the, the years just seem peculiar because it, from what you described, it starts at the '03, '04 year and then the next 10 years of time and then all the associated fees that were associated over that 10-year block. And it's getting paid out in 2018. So, it, it, it just seems peculiar that there was that 10-year block and then it's going to be paid out five years after the fact.
Well, they, they haven't, they haven't given one of these out since 2003 and '04.
Okay.
So, because they're now giving another one out since 2003 and '04, they have to go back and analyze it member by member from that period of time. But based on the, the amount of the rebate that they're willing to give back, they were only able to take it up to 2012 and '13.
Okay.
In other words, they're not going to give us a rebate back for 2013, '14 because that's only two, three years ago. And they still want the excess cash that came in for those, that period of time to support future claims.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
That clarifies it better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, um, the second item here is the, uh, activity report, the fund balances and stuff. Any questions or, on that stuff? Now, I, I may have a question to shoot you later on. I'm looking at stuff and I want to ask you a question or two about that, but I'll, I'll email it to you. Um, so, okay. Um, eight, dot four is our revenue contract approval. We have one, it's for, uh, the dance team selling chocolates, world's finest chocolates. Any questions or concerns related to that? Trying to raise a bunch. That's what I hear. Um, so... It's a lot, pushing a lot of chocolate there, yeah, yeah. Right, yep, so. All right, if, uh, there's no questions or concerns about that, we'll move that forward to the board for approval and that would be finance. HR?
Okay. Um, item nine, dot one, human resource update. I think, uh, pretty straightforward and self-explanatory, but Mr. Zir, anything to add to it?
Yeah, just, just a few more, um, statistics that came in over the last couple of days. Uh, we had that second open enrollment where we were going to get everything shifted to a January 1st date, so we have completed that and, um, getting ready to, um, make any changes. Uh, so, next year's open enrollment, we will not see that take place until on November as opposed to historically it's taken place in August. Uh, we also got all of our results back from the interactive health screening and when I say results, I say that, um, all of our people who participated in that have received their results and we also received the number of participants. Uh, so we had 461 participants out of the 798 folks. the number of participants. So we had 461 participants out of the 798 folks that will be on our insurance. So right around 57%. So I think Mark and I are declaring that a successful, a successful screening for first time around. And a lot of great feedback coming from individuals on that screening. You get a lot of detailed information, not only online, but in the mail. And then they also have the opportunity here in six months to get a free screening once again to follow up. So, Mark, I don't know if you have anything to say on that, but I have received a lot of positive feedback from employees on that. We anticipate that number increasing. We had a lot of employees, after their fellow colleagues were coming back, the screening results were like, oh, I wish I would have done that. But we obviously had a lot of deadlines and had a certain window, a very large window for folks to get that done. But I'm very happy with those results. And Mark, I don't know if you have anything to say on that. Is those...
No, I think I would just echo everything you said. You know, I've heard from numerous employees saying the exact same thing. I think many of them were blown away by the report that they received in the mail, as we were when we went through the process. And I would expect that number to hopefully significantly increase next year. So as we continue to move forward to kind of get our employees a little more involved with managing their own health and hopefully saving the district money, as well as themselves, and reduce premiums down the road. So all went very well.
This feels like a very strong, strong number. So pretty impressive.
Yeah. And a great company to work with, very smooth. We had onsite testing, offsite testing. So very convenient for everyone, too.
Good. Anything else?
That's it.
Just I noticed there is a LUDA survey on there, so I want to make sure you complete that, because there are sticklers.
What's that?
There are sticklers, so.
Yeah, I don't want, I would hate the leader of LUDA to be down my neck on a LUDA survey that's not completed here.
You can just make sure you're timing on that submission.
We'll make sure we get that in.
Too soon. Too late, too soon.
All right, building and grounds.
Oops. Okay, item 10.1, O&amp;M updates. Mr. Runkowski, anything to highlight on here?
A couple of things. One, just, it's not on here, but it's always on our mind. I know energy conservation. We've just recently applied for six more of our facilities to have Energy Star rating. We've received notice back already that three of them are approved. So we'll have some formal announcements in the near future. One of them is actually in the top 10% of buildings performers in the country. So we're doing really well. A lot of projects closing out, which is giving us more time to plan for next year. I have attached some information about tariff changes. I'm not sure how much the board is aware, but it's always a moving target. And I just gave you a sampling of what's going on. If you go to, I think, page three, the O&amp;M updates, you'll see there's some explanation from ComEd on some of theirs. They're, actually, what's happening in electrical is the actual commodity cost continues to be very, very low. But all the adder fees that keep adding on, and they dream up new ones, it seems like all the time, the ICC agreed to, that are increasing our costs on a regular basis for power. And Nycor, just, I had to question them. They never send these notices out explaining their, you know, actually, in the type of natural gas procurement we do, there's a net one, there's a net loss of distribution, through the distribution pipeline, they figure. So we actually, you know, we're paying for 1.32%, and then we actually burn, because that's from the resource that's being purchased from to getting to our meter. There's a line loss, they say. And then, for your reading pleasure, there's a couple of sheets here. There are some of the spreadsheets I use to track our utility bills. What, how we work in our process of evaluation and determination if they're accurate. The first, more deep, full sheet of paper is the power procurement tracking. I actually get the ComEd meter reads. I put them in the spreadsheet, and all the tariffs and all the fees are actually calculated based on formulas, experience we've had. And so I look down and see how those compare. And if they are not matching, I highlight the cell in pink to note that there's a tariff change. I just recently learned something that, you know, if you saw a much, I've got years and years of this kind of data. And if you looked at the whole thing, you would realize that there's some of them that seem to repeat for three or four months before they seem to home in into a fixed new rate. And that is, I've learned that is, that is because they really don't know what to charge. It's supposed to be at cost. They adjust the number, then they track with their actual costs, and then they come back and ask the ICC for tweaking, continue to tweak until they reach what they consider a balance. And the last thing on here, in this attachment packet here, is a pretty long report. It's a PowerPoint from one of the three largest solar installers in the country, IGS Solar. We're induced to them by our partner, Internoc, who's been helping us with demand management and power procurement, and trying to work with us through some energy efficiency initiatives. And they have, this is something I mentioned last month, where they gave us some preliminary proposal on what they think our outlook would be for possible solar installations, based on things I told them. A guide I gave them was, we would not want to put something in at this, in my vision right now, that would be producing something in excess of what our meters consume, because then we'd be into a zero or reverse metering, and we'd be in a, even a more highly charged tariff structure. And so this is just a goal to shave our demand, which would help us significantly shave our costs. If you look deep into the document, there's actually some pages where I plotted for them some of our site maps and did some, some takeoffs on acreages. And it's interesting to note that to meet that kind of power generation goal that I suggested, we don't have to use all of our available farmland for this purpose. And I told them, one of our rules is, we'd obviously have to produce more funding than the farm would produce, which is very easy to do. In fact, I talked to Prune Farms representative, who we farm with just the other day. They, actually, solar providers are pursuing him for some of his other land he owns, too. It's a really interesting thing going on right now. Interesting thing that just happened at the beginning of December is that apparently, the state of Illinois has reached some more agreement on potential incentives futures that are now hot. And what I heard secondhand was that the model is, is a kind of model where those that get onboard early get larger incentives. If you delay your decision, your incentive, your incentives would be reduced. That is why I've got two phone calls and two appointments next week from two parties who would be providing us offers with more detailed information. One from an ESCO partner we are very familiar with, the CTS Group, is coming to see me. They've got numbers on a guaranteed energy savings kind of a package, as I understand it. And this IGS group is coming in with some firm numbers. They say they're open to various models, but that their first offer model here of a rough draft before they really knew the final numbers, they knew what numbers were being bandied about in the comment period, so they felt that the numbers were on the ballpark. But I'm trying to find the page in here. It's more of a power procurement, power purchasing agreement model where we don't own it. And I told them, I'm not sure if that's right fit for us. I would bring this to your attention. Oh, yes, there you go. It's actually page 29 of the 41-page electronic document for O&amp;M updates, where they provide some information. And it's interesting to note, they're really all over the board here. They're projecting what our potential savings would be. If we'd enter into a power purchasing agreement, where they would discount our electricity costs one cent below market rate, one and a half cent below market rate, two cents, two cents below market rate. And I, I mean, I guess it implies that this is negotiable, and probably some fine tuning required, based on what they figure out their expense chart would be. This would be a model where they would incur all the risk, they would do all the construction management, and they would service all the debt. We would just agree to buy electricity at a discounted rate. The alternative agreement that will be coming in, of course, is one where we would own it, and they should give us an ROI projection. And so my goal would be next month, be able to present to the board some more detailed information and see where you want to go from there on it. I know, at last I recollect, you told me to keep looking into it, so I'm doing it. Be happy to answer any questions? Or IGS said he'd be happy to come in, and I'm sure CTS would as well. So leave it at that for now. Unless there's questions.
No. Thank you for staying on top of that. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, maybe this is for the next round of talking to them, but if we owned it, it would then be our responsibility to repair and protect it from vandalism, the whole thing.
Yeah, it would. Now, I will tell you a couple of things about that. I've been very concerned about what the maintenance costs for these things are, because you may recollect, three years ago, we had a party come in and actually present that kind of model. I visited Libertyville. They've got two schools. I went on, I went on the roof on one of them, looked around up there, and I'm like, wow, this is too simple. It's just, the newer models of these things now are, and I've also seen the little one over at the Shaw Center in McHenry, the McHenry County College Center. And both of them are telling me it's, they almost feel guilty. There's not much to do. The only part that fails on these things is there's an inverter. And they've gotten the realization that the KISS principle, keep it simple. And this inverter, there's like their modular, you daisy chain several of them, you plug them into this little box that's the inverter, and that feeds wires that are consolidated going into your building service. And inverter fails, you go up there and replace it. And as far, the other thing that I was told was a maintenance item on these things would be cleaning dirt or, you know, goose, bird droppings or whatever off of them. And Libertyville's, what I heard in Libertyville is, it's a non-issue. Mother Nature takes care of it. So.
Well, if they're on the roof, I could see that not being a problem. Some of these layouts that I see is, it would be accessible by people just going by and causing problems.
It brings, it brings forward several considerations. One party, another party that's been in to see me recently, that really was aggressive on a power purchase agreement that, is actually the party that talked to, from Farms. They suggested that part of their model is to actually put, like, if it would be, for example, one of the locations is Reed Road, the North Parson and Reed Road that the school district owns is, is not the most suitable soil in the world, anyway. But I expressed a concern about the visual for the neighbors. And they said, well, they would plant trees around the perimeter. They would have fencing around the perimeter for security, et cetera, or things like that. This sort of installation, just to give you an idea what it's going to look like, you know, these are larger installations. The Shaw Center is very little. And there would be like gravel beds underneath them. Because the other concern I have is, how do we, we have to maintain the vegetation under here? It's not going to turn into a forest. And it all becomes a very, it's though permeable sort of thing. It's more of a, like a gravel, gravel area underneath them with posts coming out of the ground for each little, you know, rack of arrays. You know, it's not the greatest visual.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay. Thanks for the information on that, and obviously keep us posted going forward. 10.2, vehicle replacement. Anything to highlight on this one?
Yes. It's a little unique in that we're not asking for the usual vehicle replacement on the, on the cycle we maintain of about eight years. It's to, it's to replace one of our pickups with a plow, with a dump truck with a plow in a spread around the back, and it would be multi-person useful. Mostly, right now, it would be very handy for the athletic field maintenance program that we're trying to continue to enhance. And in this, in evaluation of this, we've got to reach out from the Transportation Department, who reminded me that their little service vehicle, the little Ford Ranger, is much older than our pickup truck. And they would be interested in entertaining the idea of trading in their, their old Ford Ranger and getting the hand-me-down, if you will, of that pickup for their little service routing. And administratively, I've heard that there's support for it. And therefore, we're suggesting in this proposal, the recommendation to only trade in that old Ranger. Happy to answer any questions?
So the older vehicle would, is the one that's getting replaced, that's under the Transportation Department. And then this newer one, the 2010, is just going to slide over to replace that older 2000 model?
Right.
Okay. Questions from the board? Seems fairly straightforward. Any objections with moving this forward, then? Okay, no objections. We'll go ahead and move that to the board meeting. 10.3, roof restoration and replacement bids.
Well, very happy to report to the board. I mean, we did talk about this in the September report I had on life cycle, long-term deferred maintenance. These bids came in very well. I had suggested that if we get out the bid earlier, we'd get better bidders and better pricing, and we surely have that. There are people out there interested in, very much in getting their book of work filled. In net total, compared to budget, which is based on recent history, we're $690,000 over, under budget with the four bids, these four bids aggregated. So two of the three bidders, we've worked with a whole bunch. The third one, I've checked their references, and they're very good. So I have no reason not to recommend them.
Okay. Any questions from the board? No questions. I'm seeing shaking of heads. Okay. So we'll go ahead. If there's no objections, we'll go ahead and move this forward, then. Any objections? No objections. All right. So that will move forward. And then the last one, and under Buildings and Grounds, the Chesapeake North Bus Lot redesign. Can you hear me now? Yes.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Dr. Burkey. Just want to take a few minutes of your time to update everyone as to where we are with the Chesapeake Bus Lot enhancement. And hopefully, during this time, we can maybe gather some input and feedback from you guys as well. What is really driving this forward is we really want to clean things up. Now, why do we want to clean things up? Two reasons. We really want to improve safety and improve circulation. And when I talk about safety, what are we looking to do? Is our outbound buses can operate with inbound buses, and there is, nobody's backing up. And as we all know, when we're driving across the route, we do not want to back up. And lastly, our special needs students can load from curbside instead of loading in one of the drive aisles for other buses, which is another big no-no. Improve circulation. When I say that, I want to maintain the access for regular buses, improve maneuvering and flexibility for cross-boundary private buses, as well as help keep our cross-boundary buses more efficient with their busy schedules that they do have. And ultimately, we want to better utilize our space. And these are just minor tweaks. And it'll all make a little bit more sense when I start showing you guys the pictures, for those of you who are visual learners like myself. So this is what we currently have, from an aerial view of what we had for the Chesapeake Bus Lot, just to give you guys an idea. When we go to the next one, this is for our, when our regular buses do come in, as you see from the right, they'll come in, go all the way over, and they'll go into their slots. Right here, you'll see when the private buses come in, they will go in from this angle, come right here, and be able to, when they turn around, they'll be able to make this maneuver. Usually, when they're out there, they make the other way. They come this way. And another big enhancement that is really crucial to this enhancement here is the widening of this right here. So both buses, the outbound and inbound buses, can work together. And lastly, making it accessible for our special needs students that they can load on the curbside, which is another big, huge adjustment to this enhancement. Does anyone have any input or feedback at this time?
One question. Do we envision the in-out on that east entrance exit to result in a change in the traffic signage or anything, like a stop, four-way stop, or anything like that?
Not, no.
Okay. Okay. How many, how many private buses are we talking about here?
I think we're at 10.
Between the daycare buses and cross-boundary buses.
About 10.
And will this traffic flow result in them being stacked as they try and exit the lot to get onto Reed Road?
This could. I mean, it could definitely have them stacked there. But again, they will be able to go that way without backing up, which would either, would create more chaos at that time.
Okay.
But again, the flow of the way they would leave would help out the buses that are, could potentially be coming in as well.
Now, there's no buses, the regular school buses, the ones that we use, they're not going to be parking in that, within that loop region, right?
They'll be going right here.
They're going? Okay.
So again, trying to, trying to maintain that constant flow.
Right.
Separating the buses, because we need those cross-boundary buses to go, they're traveling a long distance.
And, and those times do not overlap? Or is there a... And, and those times do not overlap? Or is there an overlap of when our buses come in and then the private buses come in and out?
Private buses.
All at the same time.
Yeah.
It's all at the same time?
Those private buses, there's, not all of those are private buses. The cross-boundary buses are our, our district buses as well.
Okay.
So those are all coming in around the same time.
Anything else? All right, then move forward. I'll turn this over to Mr. Encasick, and you can talk further on how this is all going to come about.
I thought it was important that we maybe bring to your attention some things about traffic counts, I mean, parking stall counts, pardon me. In a preliminary design presentation I had with our civil engineer, after the traffic engineer got done with the conceptual drawing, he was in my office a little over a week ago, and he brought to my attention, you know, you're going to be reducing the number of parking stalls. And he said, well, we said, I said, yeah, well, we were aware of that. Well, he had exact numbers, and the traffic engineer drawing was just a very conceptual drawing, but this is detailed. This is actually, as we've got surveys and things, that we know exactly what it was. And what he came in with is, if you look in the top, top left there, just to give you some information, which is something we're going to have to go through, the Village of Lake and the Hills, because we're significantly making improvements on the, on the ground, so we need to, we need to share it with them, is that by ordinance, we should have a total of 473 parking stalls. Our design has 483, so we're okay. We're in, we're in compliance with the ordinance. However, below in the little red and white boxes, there's some information about what we presently have. At Martin, we presently have, right along the front there, and this, and the, and just that one little north wing of the building, I mean, south wing of the building, pardon me, we have a total of 184, and we're reducing that to 140. By the way, this is laid out with the red box and the preliminary conceptual drawings that we got from our traffic engineer. And at Chesapeake, we'd have 343, but we had 405. We're reducing a lot in that big open area, I'm sorry, reducing a number of the spots in that big open area between Chesapeake and Martin by this design, which helps traffic flow, but it does pinch the count a little bit. How, the other thing I thought would be important for us to know, as you look at the little white, black and white box up in the top right there, the net visitor parking at each of the schools based on accounts we received from the HR department on staff at each of these buildings, there is, there is a lot less available parking for those that aren't staff members that are approaching Martin School. Though I personally, when I visit the school during the day, I don't seem to have a problem, but I'm not there going there every day, and I'm sure there are certain days where events that may take place, where it might get a little cozy over there. So I wanted to bring the board the idea, and I think Mr. Troy helped me see this a little bit, thank you very much, originally, that, you know, what would happen if we could possibly add a little bit of the parking in there, which is the green space in this conceptual design, which are the boxes in blue over at Martin. And, and I just actually received yesterday a drawing showing what that would mean, and it would, we could add quite a few parking stalls, or I think it's up to like 40 stalls or something more. It's quite a bit, if we wanted to do that. Now, if that's the interest of the board, when we put the final design together, submit to the village, we could do that. And I don't, it could be an alternate bid that we could look at, but then there's more decisions that have to be made when we award the bids. As if it was just plain and in the bid, then, then we wouldn't have that discussion about, you know, about that matter as much, but I don't know how strong the board feels about trying to make a little more visitor parking there, if that's a concern. Administratively, during most average days, we're not seeing a, we're not hearing or seeing of a concern. It's just that there's probably a couple of days of the year when there's events going on where there might be a pinch, and people would have to park over by, more towards Chesapeake and walk over there. So, bringing that to your attention, is there any feedback the board would have?
Go ahead.
I would just tell you, if you're gonna, if we're losing that much, you probably definitely should look at trying to pick it up through the other available space there. I mean, I've never had a problem there, but like you said, you've got to be more in tune to events and being able to facilitate events, there even though you've got the other school's parking lot to deal with, to deal with it, it just becomes a much longer walk and stuff.
I'm not recognizing, I apologize, Tony, there was something I didn't tell you.
Yeah.
I'm not recognizing, which button is the pointer? There. Over north of the building here.
Yeah.
In the bus lot, some of those 140 staff members are parking out behind the buses there right now. So there's, that's probably one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons that just came to my mind.
It looks light, yeah.
We're not working on the design of that right now, and it's really not officially marked, but there's so much room back there that, you know, I'm not sure if we'd really want to make that into a car parking, you know, aisles up back there fully officially, you know, beyond just people parking in that little oval island area back there. So, but it does offer a little bit of room. I could bring back more information on that if you'd like, but we'd like to get going with the, getting submitted to the village soon. And, you know, maybe it could be an alternate, maybe it could be an alternate bid.
Right, well, I'm, I'm just, I mean, my general thought was is, what you guys did is fine there, is you're losing a fair amount between those two. You might as well try and pick up some with the other, you know, what you have marked there. I think that's fine. I don't know what you, everyone else thinks, but...
Well, just from a process standpoint, like, to me, it kind of comes down to, there was a design out there originally, which would imply the thought was that the space wasn't needed. And then it's kind of an open question to say, well, do you want more space? And you'd say, well, yeah, if there's no other consideration, I would take more space versus less, but what is the trade-off? What is the cost? And, you know, all the different criteria that would be applied. I mean, if the feeling is we don't need it, and it's, you know, I don't know what the magic number is cost-wise.
Well, there in the alternate bid, I guess, would provide you that opportunity to make a value engineering decision then.
Yep.
Okay.
But from a, from your own standpoint, you say, is the space needed or not needed? I guess what would be your, your answer to that?
Well, I'm betting that we have more than 27 people there on certain days where inviting parents and things into the building. I, you know, at Martin, so, you know, do you want to choose to let them walk all the way over from by Martin or make it easier? I don't know. We're going to do things up front of the building where right now, they parallel park along the road here.
Mm-hmm.
That, we're going to put curbs and islands, and they're not going to do that anymore. If they want to park, they are going to have to, if there's no space here, they're going to either be blocking the road, or they're going to be parking over here.
So, so that's where the reduction of 40 spots is primarily?
Yeah.
And I think that's already happening. I don't think people are parallel parking there anymore.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, they, I think that they are.
Not as much as they used to.
Okay.
Yeah.
To me, and I think we talked about this...
I was there the other day, nobody's parked that way anymore.
Yes, they still do, and it's, it's a busy night.
Yeah.
They do still parallel park. So we will be losing all of that, so I think the additional spaces would be necessary.
Agreed.
Doug, we, we talked about that offline. Just human nature being what it is, kind of like water. Water follows the path of least resistance. People will inherently choose to park someplace, especially at late night events, where they can have the shortest walk. And, and so I think that's where the, the parallel parking does enter into the picture. And I think to a certain regard during the day, but you're there during the day more so than I am, and it's been a while since I had kids in that building. But I know history being what it was, people parallel park for events there all the time.
And with the proposed way that they're looking at it.
Yeah.
They won't be able to parallel.
Correct, I understand that.
There's going to be traffic.
Yeah.
So, yes, during like parties, or like the book fair today, we had additional people there today. So yes, there are people parallel parking.
Yeah. And that, that's where we talked about having those additional spaces, just because of that unofficial parking method that's used.
We can, we can roll it out as an alternate bid, and what'll happen is, what's, what's unique about it is to make this work with this, like, triangle of ground.
Yeah.
The whole layout changes, the whole space. So there'll be like one drawing that's the base bid, and then there'll be a whole different drawing for that area, including some of the base bid asphalt surface, if you will, with a different layout. That's how it'll work. But that's what we can do. Anything else?
I mean, right now, just, is it currently a paved area, right? It's currently?
Uh, no, it, no, it is not. The, the blue area here is mostly, it's improving a little bit. We've tried to do siliment, but we, the groundsman and I call it the mud puddle. It's just a big, because all the snow, the snow and ice melt get piled there all the time. It's, it's not very, we...
Okay, so, so you just brought up an interesting topic. Okay, so if you went with this configuration, what do you do with your snow?
Well, that is the next thing that I have to do, is talk to our snow removal crew about that. We're, we're building a model where that's, just like we did at the high school, when we added the lot there.
Yeah.
We're building a mod, we're making a little more work.
Okay.
But we're going to, we're going to enhance traffic flow a tremendous amount. And we're going to have to figure out a way to do it. We, you know, what we do at the high school, when we had to do it, I think we had to do it twice last year, where you get to a point where you have to load it on trucks and get a little fleet, and you have to drive around the other side and dump it in open ground. And we've got plenty of open ground the other side of Martin School.
Yep.
That's what's going to happen.
Okay, all right. All right, just as long as you have options, yep.
And north of Martin School, we have a lot of open ground too. Anything else on that one?
And then, as we talked about before as well, that east-west arterial that borders the long side of the triangle, it goes up, down on the diagram.
Yes.
That are, to me, that's an arterial road, because there are people that are coming both inward and outward from that part of the lot.
Talking right here?
Yes, on the other leg of the triangle.
This, this one?
Yes. That's going to be able to handle the traffic on that too, because there are going to be people that are going to be going left and right out of there.
Yeah, well, the traffic engineer has been reissued this document, for him to look at it again. But this is, this all, this all was his, his engineering recommendation for us, so.
Okay. All right. Any further questions from the board?
Okay, then, if I can get this to go to one more. Here? Here? One more, Dan.
Forward.
Forward. Oh, that one, you put it at the end. Oh, how about that? I see. I see, thank you. Make it interesting. So, just to review our process, traffic engineering puts the conceptual design together, civil engineers put together, some preliminary, soil borings are done, geotechnical recommendations are forthcoming real soon. Stormwater management, we're looking forward to the fact that we probably don't have to resubmit stormwater calculations. It still looks like we're going to be a net less hard surface, so we won't have to have an engineering review on that. There's a net surplus in the original design from when Marlowe was built, so we even had a little cushion if we're close. And the last time we brought, like, the little drive improvement over in front of Marlowe to Lake and the Hills, and they saw the data, they said it was fine. We've got to get a firm dimensional layout, and we're tweaking that right now. We're getting really close to be able to get to the big step where we submit to the Village of Lake and the Hills, and we're not going to go out to bid, I'm not going to want us to go out to bid until the Village of Lake and the Hills endorses the design, and we've got several months during the winter to do that. So you won't really be probably seeing a bid for this. My vision is you'll be seeing a bid to award in like late March, early April for this project, as it stands right now. And that's all I have to say, and I'm sure Adam and I would be happy to answer any other questions the board might have.
Okay. Any, any additional questions from the board? All right. Thank you for the information on this one, and that's it for building and grounds.
Mr. Fleck, any legislative updates?
No, I probably should have, in revision and adoption, mentioned that we don't need it, so sorry.
Okay. We did talk about the, the tax legislation at the federal level. Nothing yet on that. So, item number 12, Board of Education, you have minutes there from November 2nd and 9th for review. Any questions? We'll move that forward. All right, 12 dot two, School Board Conference Review. This is our chance to kind of sum up in public session some of the things we encountered at the School Board Conference, learned, things like that. Mr. Troy, do you want to start?
Sure. So, sorry about the microphone. This was, for me, a different School Board Conference than previous years. And, and I'd like to thank Dr. Burkey for that. In light of the announcement, Dr. Burkey's departure, I tried to focus a couple sessions on searching for a new superintendent. It's something that we had not done, I have not been a participant in before. And so it was time to get educated on how to be an effective searcher. That's our job as a school board, is to hire the superintendent. So that's where I concentrated my efforts. One of the other things that I did is I, I, every year, I try to get down to the vendor booths and just take a look at what kind of vendors are out there. This particular year, one particular, one vendor caught my eye. It is a vendor out of Florida that does apps for schools. And what they do is they essentially put an entire calendar for a particular school into an app, they roll that in with other schools within the district. So there's an interoperability between buildings. So if you have children that go to multiple buildings, you can easily use this app to find activities as they're going on, where those activities are going. If there are fees associated that need to be paid, this app can help do that. It helps do lunch programs. It's very comprehensive. They did give me an approximate cost for it. I don't, I passed the information on to the board and allowed them to download this app. The vendor provided instructions on what needed be done in order to download it, their demo. They were kind enough to do, provide the demo overnight, and for one school, so people could take a peek at it. And if the board wants to pursue it down the road, it's something for them to, for us to decide, and maybe even get that demo out to other people. So that's the summary of my School Board Conference experience.
Well, I had a different experience. I did not attend the conference. But what I did do is I, I did a little bit of European vacationing with a, one of my favorite alumni of the class of 2015.
Your favorite daughter?
Yes, my daughter. And then what really hit home with that is, you know, tying it back to education here, is just the value of a world studies curriculum, of some of the trips that we take and offer to students. My daughter did take one of those when she was in her final year in high school, and just very valuable insight and perspective that I had, and gained a new respect for the great opportunity we do give students to travel the world and learn new cultures. So that was my update.
Okay. In keeping with the, my experience was a little different theme.
Just slightly, sir?
I was very limited in what I could do due to my injuries. I want to say, I did attend a leader shop academy on, on dealing with the, communicating with the public, and it was very good, and it just reaffirms that we're doing a lot of things right already around here. Dan Armstrong is, is the head of that, and our communications with the public, with the media, is spot on, and I'm glad that we're, we're doing that. The, and I say this every year, but it really hit home this time, is I am amazed, compared to other districts, how much, everybody here is on the same page. everybody here is on the same page, um, with what we're trying to do. Uh, we may have different ways of looking at it, uh, from a board standpoint, administration, certified staff, non-certified staff, parents, other members of the community, but, um, not every district has that. And, uh, that is a big, big deal to me, that we, um, are able to, uh, focus on the students and, uh, best way to provide quality education for them. We're very, very fortunate. And, and every year that I go to this and see what other districts are dealing with, it just, it just makes me feel real good about what we're doing here. And, um, finally, uh, the, the other thing that, that we do every year that I think is important is we do get a chance to kind of relax and, uh, be together as a group in a, in a setting where we're not voting on things or discussing things. We're just enjoying each other's company and, uh, with the people that can attend that, I just think that's so great and, uh, really appreciate it. Thanks.
This year, I, I attended fewer sessions than I have in the past. Uh, I did get a chance to go to the delegate assembly and represent the district, um, on our positions on the IASB resolutions. Nothing exciting out of that. And I did attend our, uh, own district's presentation on the use of video in communication. And that was, uh, well-received for those that were there. It was, uh, a really well-delivered presentation, well-received by a number of the districts that attended and some great breakout conversations afterwards, talking to other school districts about, um, their interest in, in getting started. And, and obviously Dave on our side is just, you know, that, you know, that, that special individual that really, really brought it all together. So I want to thank everybody that was involved in that.
My experience is I got a totally different impression of Dan Armstrong. Positive, of course. That's all I have, no. I wanted to piggyback on, um, on Don's comments about the presentation that we did. Actually, it was brilliant. The, the presentation was on our use of video and all our videos were about all the different things we're doing in the district. And you had a room of people that were just blown away by everything that we're accomplishing and kind of almost like intimidated to go ask questions, like, where do you start? How did you guys get to this place? And it was just really cool to see how everyone responded to all the different initiatives that we have and how we're using the, the power of video and communication to share that with our entire, uh, area out here and what the advantage is of all that and, and that kind of thing. And Dan was humorous during the whole thing.
Right? Right, he stole, he stole Jessica's lines, yeah, absolutely. I did catch that. Um, yeah, for my part at the conference, I did, like Don, I attended, uh, less, um, um, of the sessions that they have. But I, I, what I focused on is I, I never go down to the exhibition hall. I did this year, um, and in particular with, uh, one of the superintendent search firms that were, uh, down there and, and got an opportunity to talk at great length with, uh, one of them and it was extremely valuable time spent there. The majority of, the other time was spent looking, um, now, looking at the district's audit. I, I do typically take a few minutes at that conference to look at the district audit. I didn't bother to, to get Mr. Altmeier involved this year like I did the year before. But I just try to connect, um, look at that fine, detailed piece of report that is produced, uh, and, and some quiet time there. But, uh, actually, what's of most value though at that conference is the time spent with, uh, my fellow board members and the, uh, our district administration who's there. Uh, just being able to have, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty-minute conversations with everybody regarding all kinds of things that are going on. I mean, there's all kinds of topics being presented throughout the conference. They just, it just, you're able to focus and concentrate on educational issues that, uh, you just, you know, again, we, you know, we're here at a board meeting, we have an agenda, we, we only have so much time to, to think and look at that stuff. But that, at that conference, it's an opportunity to really be focused on, on things that are going on and then also be able to attend our awesome presentations. I mean, we, last few years, we have had, uh, some great presentations. This year was absolutely, uh, top-notch. So it's, uh, just very proud to be part of the district and attend that conference.
So my experience was different, obviously, because it was my first year. So I went to all the new member sessions and for me, it was valuable to, um, meet, you know, our lawyer and other, um, associations that we work with. Mark Altmeier is a big deal, I learned too. And IASBO. Kind of a big deal. We also won. You are. It's impressive. Clown, everything. We also, um, had the opportunity to win some money for our education foundation. And we did that, we beat District Three Hundred and won a thousand dollars for our education foundation. So that was good. But for me, it was just the value in it was, um, getting to spend time with the board members and the administration and to get them, to get to know them a little better.
One more thing along the lines of what Tony was saying about the camaraderie. I need to give thanks to Tony. We went out to breakfast and the restaurant was very, very crowded. This guy was my lead blocker. He kept, he basically cleared a path so nobody would bump into me for fear that I would like probably fall down into a puddle of goo. And, uh, it was good, it was a lot of fun. Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, if there's any question as to the commitment of your board members, um, to have, uh, Michael go downtown on, on his own in such a crowded area to represent the district and, uh, educate himself on, on different opportunities in the district with, uh, five broken ribs and a broken collarbone, I think that says a lot, so, uh, kudos to you.
My doctor was not happy.
And on the other hand, it's not maybe the smartest thing to do, but you, you, you've got to deal with that. So, uh, with that then, I'll make a motion to go into closed session at seven thirty-four PM for the items listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Mr. Troy. Can I roll call, please?
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Drizell?
Yes.
Mr. Guerin?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, we are in closed session.